Good evening, the time is now 5:30 PM and I call this meeting of the Danville School Board to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hughes.
Here.
Dr. Campbell.
Present.
Mr. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Atkins.
Here.
Mr. McWilliams.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mrs. Cobb.
Here. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. It's been moved by Dr. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Graves to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams.
Yes.
Mr. Graves.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb.
Yes. Thank you. If you all would, please stand with us as Mr. McWilliams leaves us in a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
I pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time we move to Section Two, Item 2.1, Approval of Minutes. It's been moved by Dr. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Graves to approve minutes as presented. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Payne.
Yes.
Mr. Graves.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell. Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams.
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb.
Yes. Thank you. This time we move to Section Three, 3.1, and we recognize Galileo High School's track teams. And we have with us Olivia Zoom, Mrs. Ramsey, and the track teams who won regional titles and will compete in the state competitions. So, welcome. Now, we'll turn it over to you, Ms. Ramsey.
Can you hear us, Ms. Ramsey?
Yes, I can hear you. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. So, they're on the road to James Madison. We wanted to bring recognition. Can you tell us a little bit about what's happening?
Yes, well, the track team has been very successful this year in all areas, both indoor and outdoor. This is the outdoor season and they did exceptionally well at regions. And we are headed to the state championship for, that will be tomorrow at JMU. So, we hope to have a great time there, see some great relays. We are looking forward to that and we are excited for our students, very proud of them, as well as our coaches and their dedication. I'm telling you, you guys always mentioned about seeing them running downtown and it's true, these kids are dedicated. They are truly dedicated to what they do every single day. They practice all of the time, no matter what the weather is. And they, they really truly love it and they're very passionate about it. So, we appreciate your rec- and tonight.
And we have our coach. Our coach is?
Yeah, I think, I think Coach Lawrence is on here.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much for having us on here tonight and recognize our team. We wanted to share their faces with you tonight, but they're all, we're in Livingston right now and they're on the restroom off the bus at our bathroom. So, one thing they're not fast at is getting back on the bus. So, hopefully we'll run faster tomorrow. And I have Coach Thaxton here with me as well.
Hi, guys.
It's been an exciting season and we have some teams heading in tomorrow ranked first place. And we're hoping to finish where we started. And we thank you for this continued support and the excitement and the, all the, the time that you're surrounding the team. Thank you very much.
Good, everyone. All right, and thank you all and congratulations again on your current success and we wish you continued success on tomorrow. So, thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Next, we move to Section Four, 4.1, Public Comments. The public may address the board. Do we have anyone signed up tonight?
I'd like to have one signed up.
All right. Thank you. And we have, well, Madam Clerk, if you would read the, the guidelines.
The Public Comments Agenda Item offers an opportunity for the board to hear directly from Danville citizens on matters of school interest. The board's responsibility is to hear a speaker's items of interest, make any clarification necessary for board understanding, and then assign school staff to investigate and report back to the board. Individual presentations shall be limited to three minutes or less.
Thank you. And we welcome Mr. Cornell Tighden, who wants to talk about Rock the Block tonight. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, everyone. As you're aware, we do have an annual event that we call Rock the Block. It's a celebration with our youth in the community that we bring them all together. I am here to invite the school board to come and join us on that event. It is on the 26th of June from four to eight. Some people, some organizations in Danville schools will be, be there as well. So, we invite you all. I would like to give honor to, first, the chairman and the school board members. Do, please forgive me for that. Trying to hurry up and do it. And also our sponsors, starting with the Wendell Scott Foundation, the Danville Regional Foundation, the Opportunity Neighborhood Initiative, the City of Danville, the Police Department, the Sheriff Department, One Hundred Connections, and Mother Stronger Together. Those are a few that will be as the sponsors of our event this year. If you have any other further questions, I am here to answer those for you. I will have information for you later. They are over there printing them out now, so we got a new flyer as well.
Location?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. The location is at Pumpkin Creek Taylor Drive. We do have water activities. We added the gaming system, so it's going to be a gaming competition as well this year, the basketball tournament as well, free food as we always do. You can get as many surveys as you, as you allow that you will need there. We do have way over 500 people that will be there that we have had in the past. This year's survey will have each individual name on it, okay? Including our new superintendent. So, I'm just letting you all know when you see the surveys, that the surveys is there. We want, we will have a closed meeting with the, with the information and then we want, we want to bring it out to the public. It is helping our demographics to get where we, where we are with the Opportunity Neighborhood Initiative that we're moving on to the next stage.
Thank you, Mr. Tighden.
Okay, thank you all. Y'all have a good day.
All right, you too. Next, Item Five, 5.1, we will hear an update from Dr. Harrison on the school boundary study.
Thank you, Chair Cobb, and member of the board. I wanted to bring to you an update on the work and where we are with the work with the boundaries study. And we have on Zoom today two of our team members. One is Bob Tanner and the other is Simi Ra- Ra- Rafer. And so, we'll start with our presentation and they're here to answer questions should they arise. So, I will drive, I think I'll drive the presentation. So, the core team is Dr. Michael Razor. He was a Chief Operations Officer in Jefferson School District in one of the larger school districts. Has worked as a, as an educator and worked in this field for several years now. Dr. Simi Raferd has been on the team as well. And Mr. Tanner, who is on the call. So, Dr. Raferd and Mr. Tanner are on the Zoom conference this evening. So, as we started this work, the goals behind this work was to course building community, looking at services, efficient means of providing services and improving our transportation. So, we needed to start with, of course, looking at our boundaries. When we looked at the process, they, they agree, the team agreed to keep our objectives in mind, look at our expectations as a community, have good communication protocols, which have been very good with relative to date, and certainly stick to the timing factor there. We wanted this completed by June. And so, some data collection that occurred was they looked at school capacities, school enrollment, looked at our boundaries, our transport data, our grade configuration, school year schedule, and so forth and so on. So, there's a whole list of historical geo-coding of our students and our process for routing students. They analyzed the data further, taking a look at capacities, the impact of school closure, grade configuration, and our transportation patterns were included. The process to date has been engagement with the staff, data collection, and data analysis. And to date, they've done a very good job. We paused at community engagement and I'll explain a little bit why. We started looking at the materials and the major issues. We wanted to speak to the community about various aspects of, you know, where they live compared to where they attend school. And we wanted to engage in a conversation about access and those types of things. But we, we found a few challenges, so we wanted to pause there for a moment and hit the reset button on engagement and what we would do. And then, of course, they agreed to a final report based on data and what would be best for our children. And so, when it came to the timeline, there was a plan developed for community engagement and then the interim and final reports are pending based on additional information. And I'll share that as we come forward. So, as we started to really define our boundaries, a few of the challenges we found included some of the, the lack of connectedness to some of the elementary boundaries. For example, if you look up to the right-hand side, there's a purple zone or lavender zone up to the, I'm sorry, the top left. Those students are on Piney Forest and Franklin Turnpike area and they're zoned to attend Gibson's, so we bust them down across the south side to Gibson. And then, you'll see down at the lower left, there is a little green area at the lower left, Forest Hills. And Forest Hills, you'll see is up in the middle of the city. So, we bust across the Schofield line to get to Forest Hills. Now, there's not legislation or law or code that says that attendance boundaries must be contiguous, but our board policy does suggest that we must have a rational, some kind of rationale for these types of, of, of boundary zones. So, when we really start to look at efficiency, it's very difficult to get children from Piney Forest or Franklin Turnpike down to Gibson and back to get the buses back to where they need to be on time. So, looking at these things, what we thought we would do is spend a little more time looking at why these attendance zones are disconnected and then doing, having some conversations with parents before we could make real true recommendations. Naturally, it would seem to us that all of the Schofield children would live in the area. It would seem that Forest Hills children would live in the area. It would seem that Gibson's children would live in the area. But we need to take a little more time, more than the group had, to do this. So, that was one of the, the areas that we wanted to look further at. The other, let me stop going. Did it stop moving? Okay. The other area was the assumption was that the Northside preschool children were on the north end of the county and Grove Park south end. And that's not quite true when we geo-code the students. They come from different communities, which is really great, by the way. And also, we know there's a new requirement that 10% of the students in our preschools be in our, in our EC program. And so, it does make us look closer. So, we can't have Northside without any of our EC students. They have to be integrated and included in the community. So, that's another area we need to look at. I need to step back this way. So, this is Forest Hills and I won't belabor the point here. It shows how Forest Hills attendance line draws from two communities that are not contiguous and that does cause an inefficient transportation situation. But we're not ready to make any recommendations at this time. Maybe you better push because this is not working. The other is Gibson's and you'll see that, again, the Gibson's students are bused from Piney Forest, Franklin Turnpike down to Gibson. And no recommendations at this time, just an acknowledgement that we need to explore how to create a more efficient boundary situation. The next one is Johnson's and Johnson's pretty tight with its community for the most part. Students who attend down from the other parts of the county chose to attend, or choice students, students who have chosen to attend Johnson's and provide their own transportation. The next one is Park Avenue and we were just really interested when we saw the number of students in the Johnson's area who attend Park Avenue. And they actually are choice students, but the students that are there in the middle are closer to Woodbury, but they're bused across Piney Forest and they go to Park Avenue. So, we want to spend some time in that community, talking to that community. And then, Parker Road, you know, is off of Piney Forest and Parker Road is closer to Woodbury, but the children are bused to Park Avenue. And Schofield is, as you see, and we have students who are bused from, across the Schofield attendance zone to get to Forest Hills. And then, you have that whole group there to the, to the right of Forest Hills in the, in the upper right that are closer to Forest Hills but bused to Schofield. And Woodbury shares a lot of students with Johnson's naturally because they're so close. And Woodrow Wilson, all but about 48 students have opted to return to Johnson's and Woodbury. We also have our middle schools. And middle schools, we're not really sure about how they assign students. It depends on the, the elementary school. Our board policy says the assignment must be made with some level of consistency and some level of thought. And it depends on the principal and the elementary as to the assignment. So, you'll see students who are in the same home bused and attending two different schools. You'll see them on the same street attending two different schools. So, we want to take some time to make a recommendation about the middle school assignments. And again, currently, that seems to be a random student assignment process. And we'd like to take some time this next year to assign students based on neighborhood or elementary feeder pattern, educational program choice, or hybrid of the two. So, what I mean is that if kids are in a certain neighborhood, they would attend a school. Or if they chose a program, they would attend a school. So, would be a very objective, non-biased way of assigning students. And this, of course, is George Washington, which captures everyone, just, just a note. So, our recommendation is not to conclude this process this year. We would like to take this next year, beginning in the fall, to talk to our community, talk to, so that I can bring you back recommendations that are, that, and this will take some time. And especially for the middle school, we want to involve the administration, the teachers, and the students in trying to decide what is the best process. If we're going to have children from across the district attending both schools, perhaps it is program-driven versus principals assigning students based on random criteria. And if it is an assignment process, we want to be very clear on the criteria that's very public, so people know how they were assigned to different schools. So, the real update is that it's still a work in progress. We found a lot more than we thought we would find and we just need more time so that we can listen to our community. Questions for the team or myself?
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Anyone have any questions for Dr. Harrison or the team?
Mr. Tanner or Ms. Raelyn, that you all have, Dr. Red, that you all have any additional affirmation? Rafer.
I just would say, just say hi and it was a pleasure to be here. No, I think you covered it very well.
Yes, I concur. Let me raise your ear. Rob and I were listening and, Dr. Harrison, you can come on our team anytime. If you want to pay the show on the road, you did a beautiful job.
So, thank you all. So, we have a recommendation for an adjustment in our budget to, to continue the work for the next year. And the goal would be to bring a final plan to you in December, probably February, January, so that we could plan for the following school year, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. And thank you all for being with us tonight.
Thank you all.
It's been a pleasure. You guys have a great day.
See you soon.
Bye-bye.
Next, Item Six.1, we will hear from Ms. Kelly about the summer internship program. Welcome, Ms. Kelly.
Madam Chair and board members, good evening to each of you.
Good evening.
Danville Public Schools, in collaboration with several community organizations, launched a summer youth internship program opportunity earlier this spring. Information regarding the internship was shared via social media, school email blast, and the school's call systems. The initial project included the ages of 16-plus. However, a presentation to the Danville City Council launched a new alternative for us with our 14- to 15-year-olds. An overview of the program is here. For our 16-plus group, we had 27 participants working 32 hours per week. On Fridays, the students will have a virtual debriefing session with our boot camp facilitators. This will provide our interns an opportunity to review the week, share experiences from their jobs, and talk about some of the positive things that they are doing and hopefully benefit from sharing with each other what's happening on their jobs. Participants are paid $10 an hour. The program started on June 14th and it will run through July 30th. Our ages 14 through 15, they're working with Goodwill and we have 25 participants in that group. They are working 12 hours per week. Participants earn $10 an hour. The program will The program will start this coming Monday, June 21st, and it will run through July 28th. During the week of June the 7th through the 11th, all interns participated in a week-long boot camp. Prior to entering the work site, we wanted to ensure students were equipped with the skills needed to be successful. The boot camp covered soft skills such as effective communication, teamwork, public speaking, conflict resolution, critical thinking, their footprint on social media, and how that impacts them on the job, and also their work ethic. At the end of the week, we had the National Career Readiness Certification Task for our students 16 and plus. We had 17 students to pass that national certification exam, and we have eight students who passed two out of the three tests. And we're going to give them an opportunity a little bit later in July to come back and test again, so they will have that certification. I have with me tonight Zoe Eliason, who was one of our interns, and she's going to come up and give you a little bit of information about her.
Good evening. My name is Zoe Eliason, and today I would like to inform you of my experience of the summer internship program so far. First, I want to say thank you to DPS, the school board, the mayor, and all the coordinators that helped this program ignite. For a long time, I have wanted to get a job, but I decided against it to focus on my education to graduate with honors and recognition, which I was able to do. So you can guess my intrigue earlier this year, when I received an email about a summer program after I graduated. After I read about the different opportunities, experience, and pay rate, I quickly applied. I was so overjoyed and excited when I got a call from Mrs. Cully that I had been accepted into the program and had to partake in an interview with my posting at Animal Medical Center. Parents and students were asked to go to an informational session about the program to make sure the parents and students were aware of the responsibilities ahead. There, I learned about next steps in the process and what was to come in the next week at the boot camp. Also, it gave the parents some ease that the students were going to have guidance before going into the workplace, that they had everything they needed for the job, whether it was transportation, food for the boot camp, or a shirt to wear at the postings. At the boot camp, I was taught about resume building, budgeting, entrepreneurship, and team building. The boot camp gave me information that would excel farther than just this internship, but many more to come. Most of the speeches and activities were interactive, so it wasn't just listening to someone speak, it was also engaging with them by being competitive or sharing our own experiences. By this being my first job, I felt that having this experience before going into the workplace is integral, because it will help me have a successful experience, not only in this internship, but in the jobs after this. It would also make me feel safe by building confidence and knowledge that most people will learn after job, interview after interview, but the boot camp has given me that experience, so I already have what I need. At my interview, I was able to meet who I will be working with for the next six weeks, Dr. Luthman at Animal Medical Center. During the interview, all the nervousness of what is to come during the summer washed away when I met her. I know that I am not only going to be working with her, but I'll also be learning from her. For my first day, this Monday, I was invited to the vet community with open arms. The transition from being a stranger to a friend was smooth because of all the nice and welcoming people there. I'm so thankful that this was coordinated and planned for my success, because even if I'm giving a dog a shot or getting jumped on by an excited dog, I am glad to be there, which would not have been possible without this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Zoe. As Zoe mentioned, she is working with the Animal Medical Center. We also have a complete list of our employers here for our 16-plus group, and that includes the city of Danville. We have students in the utilities department, social services, police department. We have two of our interns there with the print shop with Parks and Recreation. We have six students, and we have one student in the IT department with Danville Public Schools. We have students working with our summer school program, finance department, human resource department, and elementary school, and also in our pre-K school. We have students with the Danville Science Center and also with the Sheriff's Department. With our Goodwill, we have, and that's the 14- to 15-year-olds, we have students working through Goodwill that will be at God's Doorhouse, the Museum of Fine Arts and History, the New Smokestack Theater Company, and also the Health Collaborative Company, the Health Collaborative of the Danville River Region. On last Friday, June 11th, we had our culminating activity for the week, which was our meet and greet. And this gave an opportunity for parents to come, to meet prospective employers, students to kind of come together and talk about what their child will be doing. So parents were well aware of what would be happening in the workplace. I want to take a moment here to thank a lot of people that worked with me to make this internship possible. Our Transportation Department, Mr. Sayers and Mr. Atkins, Mr. Philip Gardner and his team in child nutrition, Dr. Tia Hashton, who made it a day on last Friday when it was a day off, Dr. Angela Harrison for her vision on this project, and two special ladies that worked last Friday, Ms. Stevens and Ms. Poole, the custodial staff at Westwood. They opened the building and made sure we were taken care of and everything was in place when we arrived. Our community partners are the city of Danville, Goodwill Industries of the Valley, Institute for Advanced Learning and Research, and the Piedmont Virginia Workforce Development Board. And I would also like to thank each of you for supporting our students with this internship project. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. Cully?
Fantastic.
Thank you so much. Let's move to 7.1, committee updates. Mr. Atkins, Finance Committee. I'm sorry, did I throw you off?
No, you didn't. Just want to be sure that the budget amendment later is what we discuss, the Finance Committee. Dr. Harrison?
Yes.
So we met on Tuesday, and the concern in the use of carryover funds, and we'll see more in the budget amendment, but the Finance Committee did ratify that to bring before the whole board for approval.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions at this point? We'll talk about it more later. Okay. All right. Thank you. Next, we move to 8.1, Personnel Recommendations. We will hear from Ms. Whittle.
Thank you, Board Chair, and good evening to everyone. The Department of Human Resources has prepared a set of personnel recommendations for your review. This evening, you have two pages. One contains cases 01 to 36, and the second page is the agenda with case 37. With that, if there are no questions, I will respectfully request your approval.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Whittle?
I can't hear you.
Okay. I want to call case 28.
28?
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? I think Ms. Whittle, this is an action item. Are we able to, Mrs. Spencer, do we need to?
We want to make a motion. Case 28.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel recommendations excluding case ending in 28.
It's been moved by Mr. Graves, seconded by Ms. Hughes, to approve the recommendations excluding case number 28. Any discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Whittle.
Thank you.
Next, to section nine, 9.1 through 9.5 will be Mr., we'll hear from Mr. Gardner. The first one is recommendation for the provision of purchased food and paper products.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. Thank you for having me. The first one is going to be for products and food for Danville Public Schools. There was only one bidder for this, so I respectfully approve to use Richmond Restaurant Service for the 21-22 school year.
Anybody have any questions? Action item? Been moved by Dr. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Payne, to approve the recommendation for the provision of purchased food and paper products. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. Thank you. Next, a recommendation for the provision of chemicals.
Yes, we actually had two bids on the request for chemicals. Based on the matrix and the calculations, we decided to request your approval to proceed with Wilco Incorporated for the 21-22 school year.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I just had one, and I know this is a minor amount of money, basically, but there's a somewhat of a gap. Are we talking about the same chemicals, the same amount of chemicals?
Yes, sir.
So basically, one is just charging more for the same stuff?
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Any other questions? An action item?
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Campbell, seconded by Mr. McWilliams, to approve the recommendation for the provision of chemicals. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mrs. Atkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. Thank you. 9.3, recommendation for the provision of milk and ice cream.
So this is a, this is RFP that deals with two different sides of what we do in child nutrition. I believe what you're looking at right now is the ice cream bid. We only had one bid for ice cream, which is Hershey's Ice Cream, and I respectfully request your approval to utilize Hershey's Ice Cream for the 21-22 school year.
Is there a motion?
Certainly. Certainly.
Been moved by Mr. Graves, seconded by Mr. Payne, to approve the recommendation for the provision of milk and ice cream. Well, we're just doing ice cream right now for the 21-22 school year.
What is David's cookies?
It's a, it's a nice frozen ice cream cookie for kids. It's per piece.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. Next, 9.4, recommendation for the provision of bread.
Well, there's a second part of RFP, 21-25-475, which is the milk provision. Again, just like the ice cream provision, we only had one bidder for the milk, so I'm requesting for your approval to utilize Morgen May Derrily for the 21-22 school year.
It's been moved by Ms. Hughes, seconded by Mr. Graves, to approve the recommendation for milk as presented. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. Thank you. Move to 9.4.
Now moving to bread, RFP 21-21-476. This is the bread RFP. You will see attached, I had to break this RFP out per ounce, because both of the bidders had different pack sizes on how they presented their bid. So what I did was I broke it out per ounce, and based on the matrix, Flowers Bakery did win the bid based on the matrix. So having said that, I'm requesting your approval to utilize Flowers Bakery for the 21-22 school year.
Any questions? It's been moved by Mr. Graves, I think I heard a second from, who was it?
I hear the name.
All right, Mr. Payne, to approve the recommendation for the provision of bread. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. Thank you. So move to 9.5, 2021-22 Child Nutrition Budget.
And thank you for sharing this. You know, I perceive with our alternative meal patterns that we're doing for our children, for our virtual churro, for our children face-to-face, I perceive our meals increasing in the 21-22 school year. So I did increase federal and state reimbursements from year prior. Catering has stayed the same, rebates have stayed the same, interest on our checking account has stayed the same, and our summer food service program revenue has increased slightly as well, based on the anticipated increased participation from our community. So you see the revenue there. Along with the increased revenue, it does come with increased expenses. Food and supplies expenses are the top two that have increased year over year. Other than that, you will see the profit for the 21-22 school year anticipation will be $1,196.84. Having said that, I am requesting for approval of the 21-22 budget for child nutrition programs.
Mr. Gardner, anyone have any questions? It's been moved by Mr. Graves, seconded by Ms. Hughes, to approve the 2021-22 Child Nutrition Budget. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you so much.
Let's move to section 10, 10.1. We will have a finance report from Ms. Sparksdale. Welcome, Ms. Sparksdale.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You have before you the revenue and expense statements for May, for the period ending May 31, 2021. Our revenues are coming in as we expected, and we do expect to receive all of our revenue that we budgeted for the year. Because of the no-loss funding, we should not see any reduction in our revenue for this school year. The expenses, if you look on your last page of the expenses, you'll see that we are, our expenses are running pretty much like they did last year. At this time, we'd spent about 85% of our budget, and this year, we've spent 85% of our budget. The next part of the report, finance report, is a reappraisal report, and I will call your attention again to the $1,9,659.93 that we have left that's unallocated in our carryover fund, because I will discuss them a little later this evening. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, Sparksdale. Anyone have questions?
What about the Board Services? What that comes under the administration? There's a variance in Board Services. Does that mean something we did?
Board Services.
Under administration, I understand that's a no.
Which page is that on? Page 1, 2, 3, or 4?
It's under, under expenditures. Row number 2. The first one under A, Part A, administration.
Are you looking at the budget? Are you looking at the budgeted on the far right? Or in the middle, the 1,200?
The variances, the unfavorable variances column.
Well, the 1,200 just means that overall, we have overspent that budget by about $1,200. I know we've had some professional development, but I think that line may be over a lot. On the, on the budgeted side, it just means that we didn't budget and just spent that budget as we, as we spent.
I think we did a lot more training this time through VSA, which caused, and we did add more money to that category for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Any other questions? Please call the roll. I'm sorry, we need a motion. Been moved by Dr. Campbell, seconded by Mr. McWilliams to approve the finance report as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. 10.2, Accounts Payable Warrants. So this evening, you have warrant number 231 for accounts payable for this week, and we will be mailing those checks tomorrow with your approval. I respectfully request your approval of those expenses. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Anyone have questions? Another action item? It's been moved by Dr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Hughes, to approve the Accounts Payable Warrants. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. 10.3, 2020-2021 Budget Amendment.
Yes, this request is for transfer of funds. Each year, the school, we ask the school board to approve budget amendments that are necessary in order to close the books for the fiscal year. After the books are closed, we bring to the board a report that summarizes these necessary budget adjustments by major category. So I respectfully request your approval for finance staff to make the necessary adjustment between functions to close the books for fiscal year '21.
Thank you. Any question? It's been moved by Mr. Atkins, seconded by Mr. Payne, to approve the 2020-2021 Budget Amendment. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. Thank you. And one more, 10.4, Carryover Funds Use Request.
Yes, so this request is for use of the reappraisal rated funds that we talked about earlier on the finance report, that million, little over a million dollars that we have left in the carryover, as well as projected end-of-the-year funds. We have compiled a list of items that the different departments have requested, and as you can see on the left side, I have tied those items to the specific goal and the strategic plan that they relate to. We have also prioritized them, and the reason that I did that is because we know that the million dollars that's in carryover funds is sure, but we still have a lot more expenses for this school year. I project that we will have the other 1.2 million for the rest of the projects, but just in case we don't, it's prioritized, and we will do take care of these things in the order that's listed on the right. I will go through them quickly. There's 13 million, $13,000, a request for finance to help with our goals and operations. Instruction, Galileo is asking for $4,000 for their middle-year program to, basically for printing up a strategic plan, we're requesting $20,000 from the Superintendent's Department. Operations, also the boundary study that we talked about tonight, we're requesting another $100,000 for future expenses. There's a storm drain at the Langston campus that we must repair, and that's $474,000. Science lab equipments for the instruction department, $750,000. Preschool Galileo and GW, instructional materials, $250,000. Instructions, novels for secondary, $100,000. Preschool textbooks, $60,000. Talent Ed for Human Resources, $30,000. Counseling fees of $2,340. A batting cage at GW for $4,600, and school buses for $450,000, for a total of 2.2 million. So, does anyone have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I respectfully request your approval of the to-use carryover and end-of-the-year funds.
Dr. Campbell?
As we talked the other night, I, I just like, excellent job. Just like for you to just somewhat put emphasis on the things that's at Langston, because I don't want persons to get the wrong idea of what that money is being spent for.
So we have storm drains at Langston, and they are, they must be repaired. The city has told us that.
Mr. Lucas is here.
Oh, okay.
Can you go ahead and speak to him?
Okay.
The storm drains at Langston was heavily damaged by Hurricane Michael, and FEMA is paying for almost a million dollars with what they're working on now. The remainder 1,200 feet from where FEMA contracts started to Memorial Drive, the storm drain, 99% of the six-foot diameter pipe is in excellent shape, but down at the very bottom of the pipe, in the flow range, you've got a whole bunch of rust holes, then it's causing sinkholes all over the property at Langston. My plan was, was to piggyback off of the city's contract to put a sleeve in that existing pipe, which will make the pipe almost like new, where it'll still, it'll be good for another 45 years. Anybody got any questions, Dr. Payne? Can I answer?
No, I just, thank you for that, and I'm so glad to see it being done, because as it's been forced there, I even think of Terrell Payne, he used to go there all the time, and I've driven by there several times, and it was so dangerous, and all those holes, so I'm so glad that it grew.
Thank you for that information. Thank you, Ms. Sparksdale. So this is, if there are no more questions, an action item?
That is your move.
Then moved by Dr. Campbell, seconded by, which one do y'all want? Mr. Atkins, to approve the carryover funds used requested. Any discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Sparksdale. Next, we move to Section 11, 11.1. We will hear from Dr. Newton about locally awarded verified credit VDOE emergency guidelines.
Good evening, Madam Chair, my chair, board members, staff, and our public this business this evening. I am requesting that the board suspend the locally awarded verified credit policy for the duration of the pandemic's effect on any student's graduation, and to adjust the appointment of a panel of at least three local educators to be the chief academic officer, directors of CTE, exceptional children in testing, and principals as applicable to approve the locally awarded verified credits under the emergency guidelines. And I have a couple slides to explain to you what's going on with that. So the request is to expand it, because our local policy allows for credits to be given only in two subjects, unless you are a student with disabilities. The emergency guidelines expand the awarding of a locally awarded verified credit to English, Math, Science, Social Studies, and History, and do not limit students to one. The students that are impacted by this are last year's seniors class, this year's senior class, and the two classes that were in school when we closed school early in March of 2020. So we're talking about at least four graduation cohorts that are impacted by this. And this gives you a little bit of information about that in the spring of 2020, when we closed school, the impact was for those four cohorts. Remember, cohort is named from the year you entered school to what would be your graduation year. So it started with last year's, this year's, and there will be two more years that are impacted by this. Due to the early school closure in that year, the students were unable to SOL test. And in order to verify a credit, you have standard credits, which mean I did the coursework and I passed the class. A verified credit is I did the coursework, passed the class, and I passed the associated SOL test. Because we could not SOL test because schools were closed effectively, those students had to be given emergency waivers. And so there's three pages of emergency guidelines that allow us to support those students that were negatively impacted by not being able to SOL test last year and by the ongoing pandemic conditions this year. So, thanks a lot. So just as a reminder, I have the two sets of graduation requirements, because if you remember, when the 18, 19 students entered, freshmen entered as freshmen, there was a change in the requirements. So there's two sets of requirements, and the left side is the 22, 23 students that are the ones we still have, and the right side of that chart is the students who have already graduated. The orange credits that are listed are the verified credits that are involved, so you can see you're talking about quite a bit for a student. For example, if I have English as my subject area, I need four standard credits, which can be gotten by passing English in 19th, 11th, 12th grade. I need two verified credits that would happen when I take the reading SOL test and when I take the writing SOL test that we could not get. So there was impact for those students. The only thing that I need to mention on this chart, at the bottom where you see student-selected tests and CTE credential, even though there are NAs there, a CTA credential is still a requirement, a virtual courses requirement. There are four other requirements that are not listed on this chart for students to graduate, but those things were not impacted as heavily by the pandemic conditions. CTE was, and that is one of the reasons I'm requesting that the CTE director also be a part of the local panel that verifies credits. So we won't say that. So our local policy gives verified credits for science and history, and students can only earn no more than four. And then if you are a student with an IEP, there are some additional things that we can do for them for locally awarded verified credits. But you can see on the left side, the four bullets that we have in place in our current policy. So the emergency guidelines expand upon the subject areas that can be given. They do not limit the number of locally awarded verified credit, because it would be different for every student, depending on what test they could not take, and is required that they pass the corresponding high school class, and that they demonstrate mastery of the standards or the competency in a different way. We do grading, we do other types of assessments, so we can assure you that any student who receives credit under the emergency guidelines did indeed sufficiently show us that they have mastered the content and course. So then I'm requesting, and this is what the state requires, that we suspend the local policy so that we can continue to use the emergency guidelines to assist our students in gathering their, getting what they need for graduation. So that's my request to you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Newton? I think I have one, a matter of like, when will it, will it be a point you'll come back and we'll have to reinstate that policy?
Yes, after those four classes, two classes have already graduated, and it did not impact those students' ability to go to college, because a verified credit is a Virginia thing. So their transcripts are fine for colleges, universities, and things of that nature, but we do need to take care of the state piece of this. So it would last for up to the class of 2023, unless the state extends those guidelines.
Thank you. There's no other questions, action item? It's been moved by Mr. Graves, seconded by Ms. Hughes, to approve the locally awarded verified credit VDOE emergency guidelines. Oh, and the?
Suspending policy, 3340?
Do I need to read the whole thing, Mr. Spencer?
You can quit and read it, or I don't know what the motion is.
Is that on that last page, the request for action?
The last one.
Is that what I need to read? The Danville Public School School Board suspends policy 3340, locally awarded verified credits. The Virginia Board of Education Emergency Guidelines for locally awarded verified credits will apply to any high school credit-bearing course eligible for verified credit in which the enrolled student meets one or more of the defined eligibility categories for the duration of its impact on any affected student's graduation. The local review panel will be comprised of principals, the directors of CTE, exceptional children in testing, and the chief academic officer as applicable.
Need a motion?
We already did the motion.
He's already moved and approved, and now she's clarifying what the motion is.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Newton. Next, Section 12, Dr. Harrison will make some administrative appointment recommendations?
Yes, thank you so much. The first recommendation is for the principal of Park Avenue Elementary. I introduce to you Elizabeth Bennett. Ms. Bennett is a graduate of Avery University. She has a science degree in elementary education, a master's in reading special. She actually was with the VDOE this, this last semester, working on additional reading endorsement. She's enrolled in the doctoral program at Liberty University. She served at Park Avenue as an assistant principal, a literacy coach, a Title I specialist, and a Park Avenue teacher. And we actually transferred her to Johnson to move away from Park Avenue, and now I'm bringing her back. She is all things Park Avenue. I'd like to recommend Ms. Bennett for the position of principal of Park Avenue Elementary.
Motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Superintendents' Restaurant Board.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Graves, seconded by Ms. Hughes, to approve the administrative appointment for Ms. Bennett as the principal at Park Avenue Elementary School. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. Thank you, welcome. Next, move 12.2, have a recommendation for a principal at Woodbury Hills Elementary School.
Yes, we have this evening, Keshawna Torres. Ms. Torres is a graduate of Longwood University with a degree in liberal arts, and she has a graduate degree from Liberty, a master's in education. She's been an assistant principal at Woodbury Elementary. She served as a district instructional coach in Title I. She worked in Chase City in Title I as a third-grade teacher. She has several honors listed here, dean's list, and other leadership programs she's been involved with. Recommending this evening, Keshawna Torres for the position of principal of Woodbury Hills Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. The motion? It's been moved by Mr. Graves, seconded by Mr. McWilliams, to approve the administrative appointment. Ms. Torres, principal of Woodbury Hills Elementary School. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes. Thank you, well, congratulations. Next, move twelve point three, administrative appointment, recommendation for a principal of OT Bonner Middle School.
Yes, I have Mr. Wayne Mayo. He's no stranger to us. Mr. Mayo has served as principal of Woodbury. He was in Guilford County at Park Village Elementary. Did a lot of turnaround work there. Also at Verde County, he was an elementary school principal. It looked like it, but he served as a principal for quite some time, about seventeen years if I remember correctly. Mr. Mayo comes to us with a degree in mathematics education from Elizabeth City State University and a master's in school administration. I'd recommend Mr. Wayne Mayo for the position of principal at OT Bonner.
Action item?
Sir.
Moved by Mr. Graves, second by Mr. Payne to approve the administrative appointment, Mr. Wayne Mayo for principal at OT Bonner Middle School. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Mayo. Next, move twelve point four, administrative, recommendation for administrative appointment for the principal of the Danville Alternative Program.
Yes, I have this evening Frankie, Ms. Frankie Logan. Ms. Logan has a bachelor's degree in human services counseling, a master's in community and college counseling, a master's and additional master's degree in sociology and criminal justice, a third master's degree in curriculum instruction and behavior analysis, and a certificate in school administration. She has served in several roles throughout her career. She's served as a special education teacher, an adjunct professor, a family support specialist. She worked as an interim assistant principal in Halifax, was a counselor in Halifax, won't hold that against her. Sociology teacher, dual enrollment in Halifax. Since she's been here, she has served as summer school principal, a school counselor. And this evening, I recommend her for the position of principal of the Danville Alternative Program.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Action item? Been moved by Mr. Graves, second by Mr. McWilliams to approve the administrative appointment. Ms. Logan for principal of the Danville Alternative Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes.
Thank you, congratulations. And next, twelve point five, administrative appointment for the director of student support services.
And following this, if I can have something, these are asked for your patients. I would like to introduce some of the other leaders we've approved on the personnel list, if that's okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so for the director of student services, I have Dr. Holly Jennings. Dr. Jennings has a bachelor's from Virginia Tech in family and child development, a master's in counseling. She also has another master's in educational leadership. They like getting master's degrees, but the doctorate of education and leadership development. She currently supervises discipline and compliance in Annhurst. She's been an assistant principal in Chatham, a school counselor as well. So this evening, I'm recommending Dr. Holly Jennings for the position of director of student services.
Action item?
Madam Chair, I would approve Superintendent's recommendation to director of student services.
Been moved by Ms. Hughes, second by Mr. Payne to approve the administrative appointment. Dr. Jennings for the director of student support services. Any discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobb?
Yes.
Thank you, welcome and congratulations.
I don't want to read the resumes of everyone, but I did want to recognize Sheri Vaughn Hicks, Assistant Director of Federal Programs, newly appointed this evening. Also, Tiana Galloway as our coordinator for mathematics. Dr. Antonio Harrison. If you, you can stand, you all can stand, I'm sorry. I didn't make, for a coordinator of adult education and district-wide credit recovery. Thank you, welcome. I guess we should take time to pause and... I didn't know if the assistant principals came or not. Susan Badger, one of our new assistant principals, welcome. Lori Daniel, who'll be going to Bonner, congratulations. Lisa DeBerry, who will join us at GW. Tammy Waldron is a testing coordinator at GW. She'll join us as an assistant principal at GW High School. Kenya Smith, our elementary professional learning specialist, not sure if she made it tonight. Mary Jennings, one of our literacy specialists. Megan, are you here? Okay, so they may not have come, some of our specialists, but we did want to recommend, in case they did. Stephanie Harrison Franti and David Thaxton, who was on the bus actually with Galileo, would be a math specialist with us. And Carlisha Bullitt would be a math specialist. So thank you all for being here this evening.
Thank you. Next, thirteen point one, board request for information for future agenda items. Do you have any? Dr. Campbell?
Madam Chair, I would like, if all possible, I'd like to be, thank you, these are the type of reports at school levels that have some kind of information on how many did have retired, how many teachers we've lost from the school year. That could be some kind of report that can be given to us the next school board. I would certainly like to know where we are with that.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Move to section fourteen, comments, city attorney?
I don't have any comments.
Dr. Harrison?
No comment.
School board, if you would, call the roll.
Mr. Payne?
So, I'm not going to be brief tonight. First, I want to say we had a long year. And we have made it. And to the leadership of the chair, vice chair, can't say enough about the superintendent and to the board. I didn't expect all of this when I got sworn in to become a school board member. But it has been a great journey. And I'm excited about being a part of the team. Want to congratulate everyone that's coming aboard. And good luck to the Galileo School on tomorrow. To Westwood Middle School and to the principal and the teachers there, as well as Woodrow, magnet school teacher, teachers, as well as the principal. I want to say thank you for spending a lot of time with the students. They was very hands-on. I acknowledge these two schools because these were my two daughters' guys. And when my daughters come home or when they get offline, they can talk about the teachers and see the principals and talk about what they have learned in the lesson. That particular day, I think it's an honor and a privilege to have the kids get off and be able to talk to the, talk about the teachers as well as the principal. I had the opportunity just to pop on into the classes sometime and just see how the teachers interact with the students. And I think it was just awesome how they just get involved with the students. So I want to thank them for just being hands-on with all the students. Also, to, to the team that we work with here. I was thinking on yesterday, finishes up at the office that this team is so great. A lot of things we went through on this year, it probably would have broke a lot of boards. But I seen us come together and we have learned from each other. We have made some mistakes. And I think our future is very, very bright with everyone in this room. My last remark for tonight, so for half PG, PGY three residents will be graduating on tomorrow. They will have a parade tomorrow around noon time at the hospital on West Main. Right at the hospital. And they have a graduation ceremony tomorrow at the institute. The reason why I wanted to speak on them is because they are uprising doctors, but they had to experience a lot with COVID. And I want to say thank you to them because they all watched the meetings and stuff also for just putting their life on the line, for just trying to save and saving a lot of lives. So once again, thank you to all. I want to make sure everyone have a good vacation, be safe. Don't forget the events for this weekend. And we hope everyone has a great summer, we'll see you back next year.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Ms. Hughes?
I'd like to echo the things that Mr. Payne had said. I would particularly like to congratulate the internship program that was presented by Ms. Colley. Thank you, Ms. Elias, for your presentation. You're very well spoken, we appreciate that speech. I know it wasn't easy in front of a bunch of strangers and everything, but you did a wonderful job. Really excited about the opportunities that the students of Danville Public Schools have been provided through this program. And thanks to all of these sponsors, all of the people who participated and helped to make that happen. The one thing that I realized last time when Dr. Harrison was giving the recommendation, the decree by the school board about recognizing her as superintendent of the year. The thing that I thought about when I was reading over that was the thought of first responders and in the way where everyone else is running out and running away from the fire. Dr. Harrison chose to run into the fire at Danville Public Schools. And I just want to publicly commend you for the job that you've done, and we appreciate you. And I am so excited about all the new people who are coming in. I'm excited about the older people who are staying and continuing to do the work. And I'm looking forward to Danville Public Schools moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes.
Mr. McWilliams?
I'll try to be a little bit free. First of all, I want to welcome all the new appointees, you guys who are coming to join us here in Danville. You have your word cut out for you, but I believe that if you weren't prepared for that, you wouldn't be here. So I appreciate you coming out and I look forward to working with you. I'm going to try and get out and visit school sites and things a little more. Got a little hectic or crazy with COVID. And I do, I am kind of excited about the upcoming school year in that we're kind of relieving ourselves of some of the COVID restrictions so that we can have schools that say a little more normal. I worked in schools for thirty-two years, and I don't know if there's anything normal about it. But it could be a little more normal, a little more what we expected. So I'm looking forward to getting back to reality, for lack of a better way of putting it. This year was, I'm new on the school board as Mr. Payne. And I share some of those things with you. It was some unexpected things. But to me, the biggest unexpected thing was that we had to lay aside almost everything that we do so that we could respond to the COVID. And, and we did it well. So I appreciate my colleagues on the school board. I appreciate the people who work at the central office. I appreciate Dr. Harrison for coming in, as Ms. Hughes said, and running into the fire. And for those of you who are new signing up, I appreciate you coming in, running into the fire. See, I jotted some things down. I really do like that idea of the intern program. Getting some young people prepared for the real world. Actually, many years ago, my son went through something like that, this back in California. And I have three sons, he went through it. And of all the three, he's the hardest-working young man of all of them. So, and I think a part of it is he learned to work in real life when he was sixteen or seventeen years old. And lastly, I just want to wish well on our kids at Galileo, our Galileo Track Program. It's amazing that we can achieve that level of success when we don't really even have a track for them to practice on. We need to. Maybe running up and down the hills of Danville is better practice than a track. Anyway, I thank you, and I'm done.
Dr. Campbell?
To all the appointments tonight, glad to have heard how we're moving forward. And again, it has been forestated, but this is kind of special to me for the internship tonight to make sure our kids are college and career ready, are touching that pay off. And to Zoe, whom, is your mother here? I thought I saw it in the corner. Raise your hand, Kathy. I have known Zoe since she was saying googoo. And to see you come before us tonight and give that presentation is pay off. Thank you so much, I'm super, very proud of you. And we look for greater things happening in your life. Cornell? Thank you, sir. Anytime we can do something for the kids when school is out, that is a commitment. So thank you for your effort, and certainly I plan to be there for that event. Last but not least, many things have already been said, but I guess my conclusion tonight would be, if all possible, let's not forget Father's Day. Mother's Day, you can't find a restaurant. Father's Day, you go any way you want. All of the fathers, Happy Father's Day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Payne.
Mr. Atkins?
Thank you. People say a lot of things about me, but no one ever calls me athletic. But I do appreciate running, I do like to run. Mostly because it's just one direction, you don't move up and down, side to side. So I do have a special appreciation for what the Galileo Track Team is going through. Especially the training that leads up the race is the fun part. The training can be quite grueling. All sports, but you know, running in particular, so I do wish them well. Yes, the internship program, I think everyone's remarked on it. It was, it's really nice to see that. And let's see how we can build upon that and promote that. And thanks to all those partners that were involved as well. It was an excellent display of community. And lastly, I would like to welcome aboard our new staff members. And it was nice to see, you know, adding a lot of teaching positions this time as well. Just, you know, this is on my desk today, so just holding this up, our strategic plan. This is sort of, you know, if you think of Danville Public Schools as a big canoe maybe, and the strategic plan gives the, tells us which direction we're rowing the canoe. And just ask that you jump in and let's all row in the same direction. We can have some discussions about the direction we need to go and how we do it. But once we've pointed that boat, let's just, let's point it and row. And I do welcome your board, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Payne.
Mr. Graves?
Yes, real briefly, I'd like to welcome all of our new admin. I want to congratulate those who have new appointments. I would also take the time, I've had many conversations with this administrator. Yes, I'm going to pick on her while I have the opportunity, but Ms. Frankie Logan, if she can just stand. Just real briefly, I'm going to pick on her. Because every time I go to Langston campus, and if anybody go about Langston, that's where I also... um, that's where our alternative students are housed. So every day is not a pleasant day. Um, but every time I see her face, it's always a smile on it. And that's big volume. Um, I've asked her for I don't know how many years, even when she was my school councilwoman, she does. I asked her, I said, when are you going to become a principal? And she was like, well, I like what I do now, I love my job. So I was like, the time is now, like, what, what are you waiting on? And then to see, you know, this recommendation come through for her to become a principal of that alternative school where those kids love her like a mother. You know, I'm just excited about what's to come for you and those kids. And I know how much they mean to you, and I know how much, you know, you mean to their families because this is what it's about. You know, we're about saving our children. If you're not about that, you're in the wrong place. And I'm going to tell you, and I'm telling all the administrators here tonight, if that's not the idea, you're in the wrong place. As Mr. Atkins said, we're all jumping on the same committee. If you aren't another one, like I said, you're in the wrong place. So again, I thank you for all that you have already done and everything that you're about to do. As I preached, um, my entire year as, uh, vice chair, the best is yet to come. And I still believe that the best is still yet to come. So again, thank you. Uh, to Ms. Elias, as you, as you spoke, uh, it showed how much, you know, Danville Public Schools is moving forward. I mean, she was pure. I mean, I can't stand in front of too much people and speak so confidently, like she did. Awesome job. I had the opportunity to work with those, uh, interns over at, uh, the police department, and they're sharp as well. So, Ms. Colley, um, great job on, on your choices. And, um, to jump back to the appointments, I just saw it at the end of my folder. Uh, Ms. Sherri Sadler was, uh, was, um, brought on as the Virginia Tiered Systems of Support Program Specialist. So I think we should honor her as well for her new appointment, if we can get her around with applause. Lastly, uh, Mr. Cornell, thank you for coming forward to invite us to your event, which is always a success. Um, I'm sure that a bunch of us will be there and support you and everybody, as is always fun. Kids always have a great time. And lastly, I would like to, uh, send well wishes to our Galileo team as we know that we will get the title of their state champion.
Thank you, Mr. Graves.
Ms. Coggs?
And I did, um, I did get the note to recognize Ms. Sherri, uh, Sadler, Ms. Sadler. And so we do thank you for, for mentioning that. And we do recognize her as this new Virginia Tiered Systems of Supports Program Specialist. So, um, just to everyone who is here with us, is new, thank you for coming. Also, thank you to those that are staying with us. We really do, um, really do appreciate everyone, um, in Danville Public Schools. And just thank you for all your hard work, commitment, dedication. Um, just for the sake of being repetitive, I apologize when I go last, I have to repeat some stuff. But, um, to Zoe, uh, it's wonderful job, very passionate. And we just thank you for coming and, and letting us know about your experience. Um, to everyone who worked on the internship program, all of the partners in the city. It's very great to see everybody working together to do something for our youth. Um, there are a lot of community events coming up, um, this weekend, this summer. Just encourage everyone to participate in those if you see them. And again, congratulations to Galileo. And thank you, Dr. Harrison, for continuing to lead the way. And I think so now we will, I'll call for recess, or somebody want to make a motion for recess?
Madam Chairman, we recess for seven minutes.
It's been moved by Mr. Graves, second by Mr. Payne to recess for seven minutes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?